A long session, meaning that it starts in January and doesn't end until June. And it is a year where the two-year budget is adopted by the legislature. So things are kind of slow to start with, then the governor gives his budget and then all hell breaks loose. And that's where we are right now. So we have a lot of measures that the state legislature has put forth, some we've requested, others we're simply responding to. But I'm going to kick it off with our big ones which affect all CPAs. And the first one is CPA licensing fees. So Senate Bill 611 was introduced by the General Law Committee. And they are, um, they are a, a committee that has a lot of issues that are of great interest to many people, such as gambling, alcohol, cannabis. Gambling, alcohol, cannabis. Um, I found out the other day that they have say over what happens at pet stores that took up quite a bit of day time the day I testified on licensure fees. But there are things that individuals care about greatly that have big impacts on people's lives or are big money for the state. So I forgot another big one. I can't remember what it is, but alcohol, marijuana, gambling. Uh, you can see that when we then have a bill on licensure fees in the middle of this. At the same time, people are testifying on whether or not cats and dogs should be sold at pet stores. It's often times to get the, hard to get the attention of legislators. So I want to say thank you very much to everyone for, um, for really making an effort to, to get letters into legislators. Because if we don't have grassroots, we will not have our measures taken up by the General Assembly as a whole, or even some of the committees. So thank you for doing that. We ended up having, um, over 200 legisla- simple, uh, over 200 letters submitted to legislators and to the committee. And that was great. We had a lot of attention. We had several legislators testify in support of our bill too, as a result of constituents touching base with them. Our biggest problem right now is that, um, the governor did not put us in his fee reduction bill. So the bill already is approximately $20 million is my understanding. And he, um, and we're not included in his, and he doesn't want to go past the 20 million. We are included in the general law committees, which is around 18 million. Uh, but there's some other professions are, are not included in there that the governor would like. So for us to remain in the bill, we are going to have to continue our grassroots, uh, efforts. And focus now on the leaders because us remaining in the bill will come out of the General Law Committee, I believe. I don't think that will be an issue because the chairs there support us. But where we're going to have an issue is that this is going to become an issue that is debated during the budget debates. Meaning when the leaders get behind closed doors at the end of session to decide what will be in that final budget for the next two years. We will have to fight to remain in the bill that comes out of, um, out of the General Law Committee and either moves forward on its own or gets incorporated into the budget. But either way, because it's got such a big spend, it will become a leadership issue, meaning the Speaker of the House, the President's, uh, pro tem in the Senate, the, um, the governor and the minority leader. So the minority leader in the House and the Senate as well. So you'll be hearing from us more on that measure because we will not remain in the bill if we do not push and push hard. We already have some people saying to us, well, you know, the governor didn't include you, CPAs are wealthy. And we're like, we're taxed, uh, uh, our, our fee is 276% higher than anyone else's. You know, the next closest in the country is $200. You know, come on, guys. The average is 100. You need to, you need to change this. And they're like, well, we agree something should be done, but, uh, what about 300? I'm like, absolutely not. No, no, you know, we want 100. So we're going to have to keep that pressure up. So just letting you know that we did a great job in this first round and I greatly appreciate your support. But there's so much that's going to need to be done to cross the finish line with this one this year because, um, the governor and the leaders of the General Law Committee are not in sync right now. It is a budget year, which means it will get folded into the budget, um, negotiations. And we'll be one of many people, many organizations out there vying for a piece of that budget pie. So that's my first one to, to update you on this morning. Anybody have any questions on the fees? Looking around, I see, yeah.
Yeah, Henry.
Oh, hi, Henry. Thank you so much for reading, seeing out your legislator. She's one that testified and was absolutely fantastic.
Great. Glad to hear it. What I'm wondering is, um, the governor, I seem to recall, had proposed zero fees for a smaller group of professionals. Am I correct about that? Or do you know?
Could you say that again?
I thought the governor's proposal was to eliminate licensing fees for a small number of professions, not just reduce those fees. Am I correct about that?
He does have a measure that would eliminate some, but not all. Like you said, there's a small group where he's talking about getting rid of them completely. Um, but there is another measure that has not come out yet. That's my understanding that he is, uh, whether it's his proposal or he's supporting, that has additional people that would have a reduced, a reduced fee.
That's what I was going to suggest. That if, um, that it would be more equitable for everybody, all the profession to have some fee cuts and to have some have that eliminated and others getting none. If we can maybe work towards that, that's what I was suggesting that we think about, uh, even if we had to go to 150 in order to get it in and have the whole group be under the $20 million cap, we're better off than ending up with nothing, which may otherwise be the case.
Absolutely. I do, I would not be, um, for full disclosure, I always like to see who we're talking to before things get, uh, get going. And unfortunately, um, I'm having a little bit of trouble with that this morning, but I, I would tell you that, um, it's too, it's way too early in the legislative session to negotiate. Cindy, do we have, um, any of our members that are with DRS in here this morning? Can?
Let me check. I'm not, I didn't see anyone, but I have been letting people in.
Okay, so, um, we, so it's just way too early to negotiate. So we're in the, you know, never say die, die mode right now. Um, at some point might we have to agree to a slightly higher, um, fee possibly. And the reason for that is after the 100, 100, which is the most popular, there's only, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I believe there are six states at that. And then there are two states that are tied for, sorry, there, um, there are six states at the 100. After that, there are, um, eight states that are tied for second, four of those that are 150 and four are at, uh, $50. I, I would, I would like to finish at 100. That's what we're going to say right until the very, very end. And then if we're told, you know, take this or leave it, and they offer us $150, I would consider it a huge, huge success, given that we're at 565 now. But it's just very, very early. So if you are talking to legislators, do not, um, do not offer a compromise or anything yet, because legislators who start that early, you'll find that, um, wherever they're starting at, it will finish much higher because they're, oh, they were willing to go to 150. Therefore they'll be hap- you know, they'll still be happy with 300. The answer is no, we still won't be happy with 300. Um, so, so in terms of reasoning, yes, I agree with you, Henry. There's, uh, an, if we didn't finish at 100, would it be a loss? Absolutely not. We're at 565. But it was in the game strategically, it is just too early at the legislature to talk about compromise. So we're still in the hell no, we won't go stage, excuse my language. And then, um, when it gets to, uh, May and they're threatening to pull us out of the bill, um, or to make it even higher, we will come back, um, at, in mid-May with other, other opportunities. The legislature very rarely finishes the budget until about two weeks before the end of session. And I believe the end of session this year is June 4th. But it's the first Wednesday after the first Monday. So it's really towards the start of the, the, of June. And so we just need to make sure that we are in the place we want to be when that budget is adopted, which again is about two weeks before. Conversations about what's going to be in that package start about six weeks before.
I have a comment, Bonnie. Again, I mean, um, I think we should push yes for 100 as low as possible because it's been 565 like forever. And even before that was 450. It's been like, as long as I've been doing this, it's been always up there. So in theory, they owe us all the extra payments we've given them over the last, wow, we can't go too crazy here, but I think, I just think we have to say, hey, look, guys, it's been this, you know, it was, it's 565 for like at least 20 years, I think. I don't, I don't know how long it's been that way, but it's been high forever.
It's, um, then, so I'm going to let you know that we're not the highest in the state. I don't, uh, share that with legislators that don't know it, but I'm honest when asked. And we're tied with the attorneys who aren't in the bill at all. So, um, yes, I agree with you. We're way too high, but I also would like to set expectations. Um, I, 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 um, for those of you know me, I'm incredibly competitive. I, I, I will work my tail off until the very end, uh, to try to get what we are seeking. But there are a lot of professions that weren't included in this at all. And some of them, um, are actually legislators that serve on the General Law Committee. So for example, the attorney's not in there. Senator Kissel must have said like six times, um, well, don't you think it's only fair, this is to somebody getting up to testify on, on the bill. Don't you think it's only fair that attorneys are included in this one too? And there was somebody else who raised another thing regarding, um, I think it was insurance brokers or something. So, uh, yes, we do need to fight for it. Yes, our fee is unfair. Um, realistically, in the end, if we get 100, it is a major win. We will never go below that. And, um, I don't want to believe this is where we'll end up, but there, I would be shocked if we don't start hearing numbers thrown at us and you, if you're talking to a legislator, if you actually have a conversation with them. So I think the important thing to remember is that, um, the national average is, is actually $99.12 or something. So in the national average is 100. Um, the, the most popular fee out there for states is 100. The second most popular is tied for 50 and 150. So I think that if we keep them thinking about that, and then the other thing that's important is there's 29 states that are below 100. Now there are the oddities. You've got, and again, others that are higher. But our message just needs to be, we want to be included in this. We're significantly higher than any of the states that we compete with, such as Massachusetts and New York, New Jersey. There are two other states in, um, New England that are above 100. But we don't compete with Vermont or Rhode Island really. So I just think it's important that you keep the message.
Question, does this fee fund the Board of Accountancy? Specifically or no? Does it fund the Board of Accountancy or no, or does it?
Oh, our fee. That's an excellent question.
Or does it just go to the general fund? In theory, if our fee is higher, we get more service from the, I'm happy to pay a higher fee. We get more service, but maybe not.
Yeah, well, the way they've been acting lately, the, the Board of Accountancy is not so much a problem, but the Department of Consumer Protection has been a little bit challenging lately. So I'd rather not see additional dollars go to them until they behave the way I would like them to. Just saying, um, but no, the dollars don't go to the Board of Accountancy. But I will tell you, I started with that argument a couple of years ago. And it did not, um, it did not serve us. And I'm not sure why. Uh, but probably because dollars go from the general fund to fund the Board of Accountancy. So they figured it, it doesn't matter. Um, either way, they're getting, they're getting the dollars they need to be up and running. But, um, I think the one that works is competitiveness. I think that, I'll tell you two others we've been using. It's very discouraging for young CPAs in our state because you don't have to have your CPA credential or use it to do many of the things that we, we do. And therefore people opt not to have it. If they want to have it, um, we find that younger people, um, already attracted to New York and Boston will go to another location where it's easier to start up a business. The climate's more business friendly, et cetera. The other thing we talk about is the desire to have a more diversified workplace. And that's really very challenging when you don't, um, when you have a fee that is just so, so very high. So our initial fee is $150. That would go down to 100 as well. And then af- every year after the renewal fees would fit 565. So that's something that matters up at the Capitol. They care about things that will allow, um, allow younger people to stay here as opposed to discourage them. That works. Um, and if people work so hard to earn that credential, which is expensive to get in the first place, they should be able to have it and not be barred by the licensing fee. Those arguments work actually very well. So, all right, we're not going to get to any other topics if I don't move along. Uh, but you will see updates from us, um, as we move along uh, through the session. But do know that while you guys made a fantastic first effort to get in touch with your legislators and I'm just going to give a shout out. I see, um, Amber Tucker in the middle of my screen. I know that, um, uh, your firm actually sent things to everybody at your firm, the leaders of your firm, asking everyone to send in letters uh, to their legislators. And that was absolutely fantastic. So for those of you who did that, thank you. If you didn't, if you could think to do that next time, that'd be great. Um, we even had staff send in testimony and, um, it does make a difference. So thank you. I'm going to move on to the other part of, um, CPA licensure that we all are very interested in. And that is pathways to licensure and then mobility. As we throughout the country start to work to bring on different pathways to licensure, particularly bringing back the bachelor's plus two, allowing people still to have the 150, we're calling that bachelor's plus 30, or have a master's plus 30, we would have three pathways. Not every state is going to pass all of those pathways at the exact same time. And they may not even pass those exact three pathways, though many are doing that. So what we need to make sure is that we're not going back to a time when we had to have a license in every state that we practiced in. That was a disaster. It was just really a lot of work, a lot of wasted money, um, and time. So a number of states, Connecticut included, are pushing automatic mobility where you would have practice privilege in any state where basically you, um, you had a minimum of a, a bachelor's degree, one-year experience, and passed the exam. The one-year experience doesn't mean that anyone's going to have a pathway where you can um, get a bachelor's with one-year experience and have your license. But they're trying to take the requirement, the minimum requirement from all of them and then add to it. And you have a valid license from another state. So for example, in Connecticut, if you only had your bachelor's degree, but you had two years' experience, you would fit into that bachelor's in one-year experience. Instead, say you had a partner that got their master's and had one-year experience, that person would still qualify in that state because they had at least their bachelor's and they had at least one-year experience. The key here is that it's really passage of the exam that's making it key and having the credential. So automatic mobility requires someone to have a valid license in good standing from another state, have a minimum of a bachelor's degree and a minimum of one-year experience. Connecticut's wording their statute differently, and actually several states are doing this. We're saying, we're pathing these, passing these pathways. Um, and anybody who comes here has the ability to practice, they've got practice privileges so long as they hold a license in good standing from another state. And they've passed, um, they've achieved that, that license in one of the three pathways that Connecticut will recognize. So a bachelor's in two, a master's in one, or a bachelor's plus 30 plus one. So that's our mobility language. Again, it's being adopted similarly, either the same or similarly in 30 states this year. That's the push. Now, it, I should, people are seeking adoption in 30 states this year. Everyone in New England, right now, um, minus possibly Rhode Island, but that may change actually today, is moving forward with, um, with the alternative pathways and the automatic mobility. No, New York is also seeking it this year, but it takes them two years, um, with their cycle to get anything through. So they introduce it one year and it passes the next year because their legislative sessions run differently than ours. New Jersey and New York's going to have more trouble than anyone else because New York State Department, sorry, New York State Board of Accountancy is actually out of their Department of Education and they view things a little bit differently. New Jersey has already, um, gotten approval by their board and has sought some of these changes through their regulations. Our state requires legislation and then the regulation will follow, though we do have the State Board of Accountancy's support in our efforts. Pennsylvania just passed something in their regulations. So the Northeast right now is pretty much moving as a block with the possible exception of Rhode Island, who may be a year behind. New York has started it, but they may not go into effect until a year after everybody else. So that's great news. Mobility is the most important thing for us to get through. At the same time, in the, in the same bill, we also have those alternative pathways. And again, it's our existing 150, but we've changed the wording to a bachelor's plus 30 plus one year of experience or a master's plus one year of experience. Or the traditional, what many people have gotten their credential under, the bachelor's plus two years' experience. And all of those obviously require passage of the CPA exam. Does anybody have any questions regarding any of those, um, those pathways in particular? Does anyone have any question regarding mobility?
Uh, Henry, I've got a quick question on the pathways.
Yes.
Um, I, I missed a little bit of what we're saying because I had to take another call for a second. Um, the, the ba- there's a pathway for a bachelor's degree that's 120 hours and passing the exam and two years of experience. That's certainly one of the options. Did I hear that correctly?
Bachelor's plus two, yes.
Okay, I think that's the most important thing for new, for new graduates personally. Um, there is a, a bachelor's plus 30, that's 30 hours, but not a second degree. That's what I was a little bit confused about.
So we have some people, and one of the reasons why this is important for us is New York is, um, New York will not get the bachelor's plus two for at least a year after us and possibly longer. So people that go the New York pathway, which would be 150 credit hours, we want to be able to get licensed here in.
Got it. We want to make, give them the same option New York has. I hear you.
So yes, and so the reason why we say bachelor's is we are switching as times change. Um, some states, um, are adopting the European model of education, which has fewer credit hours, but it's because they dropped some of the electives. What must be taken in terms of their major, um, does not decline at all. So people under any of those, um, those three pathways I gave you will still have to have the required 30 hours of, uh, business classes plus the additional accounting classes. Um, and that would be true with the 150. The other thing is some people are choosing not to get a graduate degree, but are getting certificates and data analytics and blockchain and different IT areas. And that to us is extremely important, given the role that technology plays in the profession. So we feel that these three pathways would produce someone that, um, is a viable candidate with the education needed without, um, restricting their options as to whether they want to be um, more knowledgeable in a tech area, whether they, um, may not have additional money to go beyond the bachelor's degree and therefore are willing to put the time and effort in the experience. Or some people learn better through experience than they do other ways. So that's why we have different pathways, different pathways, different learners.
I think this is excellent, by the way, Bonnie. Thank you.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Okay. So my next ask, and this one's much harder, and I know that we're almost halfway through, and I promise I'll run you through the other bills. But this is an area where we are going to need your support. There are other people that care about the licensure bill, so we have some help in moving that along. We're going to be the one to have to make sure that we as a profession remain in it. But it's going to come out of the committee. We also, um, have support right now from the chairs of the committee on licensure mobility to raise the bill, but I have no commitment to get it out of the committee. And given the fact that we just asked everyone to contact their legislators on the fee schedule, we've got two big issues this year. Um, and I say two instead of three because we've put mobility and licensure together as one. Um, and we need grassroots on all, both of those issues if we're going to get them through. We really do. So I understand that the pathways may not affect you as an individual in terms of getting your credential. Um, but I will tell you, it makes a huge difference in terms of the pipeline we have, the people that you're going to have the ability to hire, the people that, uh, may be interested in, um, joining you at the firm and then later, you know, buying the firm from you when you decide you're going to retire. We don't have a lot of those people right now. We need to get them into the pipeline. We don't have enough, uh, people at firms. We don't have enough people in governmental agencies. We don't have enough people at nonprofits or for-profits. We really need to do something to expand our pipeline. This bill will not be a silver bullet. I'm just going to be upfront about it. But it is one of the very important things that we must do if we're going to move forward. Modernizing the pathways is extremely important. And until we get as many people as we need, making sure that mobility or practice privilege is modernized is important too. What, um, what I need from, from everybody is again, a letter of support. Now, we don't have a bill number yet. I'm hoping we get it tomorrow. I think the public hearing is going to be on February 26th. And, um, sometimes we don't get much notice at all. So the day notice is published is counted as day one. And they have five days for notice, including the day of hearing. So I can find out on Thursday, Friday, sorry, that I've got a hearing on Monday on a bill. That doesn't give me much time to do grassroots, to reach out to you, to get things going. So we already have on our website, understanding that there's little notice. We have a page on mobility. We have another page on, um, licensure. We will send out the alert via the voter voice system so that you can contact your legislators. But I would ask all of you to please, please, when we send out the next request, to use that system to get a letter into your, your, your legislator. The way we wrote it up last time is the same way we're going to do it this year, though we may expand it a little bit. We said, if you do this, um, may we, we're, we're going to change this and also send it to the legislators on the General Law Committee, unless you opt out of not letting us do that. That's one less step for you. That means you've testified to the, um, General Law Committee, which is really important. And you've already let your legislator know it's really important. What we're going to do this next time too, if it's okay, um, is do the same thing and submit all these letters to the, to the governor. We didn't think to ask that for the fee schedule, so we can't do that there. But we will be asking that for, for the mobility and licensure. And, um, we really do need you to reach out to others to ask for their support as well. So please, please, again, uh, when you get that notice, which I believe is going to be sometime that this week, respond, um, and the way that it's written up, it's very easy to get a letter in. Um, it's great if you can add some additional information about yourself. Uh, but if you can't, that's fine as well. You have the ability to personalize it, but it's not required. Uh, any questions regarding mobility or pathways to licensure? All right, hold on. I got four things in the chat here. I'm just going to peek really quick. Oh, somebody just said it was super easy to send, um, to all of the staff and that it took 60 seconds to submit. Uh, that was Donna. So Donna, thank you to your firm for doing that as well. Um, the comment regarding $100 is okay if it, um, if we get reimbursed the difference for the last few years, I, uh, I think you should be thrilled with $100 to be quite honest. So, uh, I'm just going to let that one go. Um, all right. So I am going to move on, uh, outside of CPA licensure fees, et cetera. Now, last chance to ask a question on that at this point. Okay, nothing else there. Great. So, um, I'm going to go in alphabetical order. So, um, I'm gonna go in alphabetical order by topic, just because that's the way my brain, my brain works, unfortunately. I even put my stupid M and M's in color order. So, um, for purposes of today, we're gonna start off with artificial intelligence. That is a big issue for pretty much every employer in the state. And definitely three professions, and that would be anybody in the CPA, accounting, uh, world, medical and attorneys. And that's because AI is changing our three professions faster than any others out there. We wanna make sure that, um, we are able to take advantage of those, those tools as they come along. But we also wanna make sure that, um, they're being used properly. So, right now at the legislature, there are several bills on AI, but there are really two primary bills. The first one is Senate Bill Two, an act concerning artificial intelligence. And this is being offered by Senator Maroni, the Chair of the General Law Committee, who is viewed as, um, a leading expert in the country, um, among legislators now on AI. And has been the Chair of the National Council of State Legislators AI Group for, uh, a few years now. This is a huge issue for him, and he's trying to go about it in a fair manner. Last year, he had a bill in that, in the beginning, we all absolutely thought was, was great. Um, it allows for a great deal of innovation. It put some protections in, particularly when it came to things such as, you know, the deep fakes um, that we heard about, particularly with, with elections and other things. Um, it had measures in there to try to prevent against discrimination, a number of good things. But what happened as the bill moved along, the trial lawyers got involved, and it started having all these liability provisions added, which were not acceptable. And in the end, the business community worked closely with the governor to make sure that the bill was vetoed. If it could not be changed, it was to be vetoed. He had that authority back then, and therefore, although the bill made it out of the Senate, it stopped in the House and was not taken up because they knew the governor would veto it. This year, we're watching very, very closely because if we don't like it, we've got a problem. Because the governor, while he's got veto ability, he has the authority to veto something. He does not have enough, um, he does not have enough people in the House and Senate to support his veto. So the Democrats have such a large, large margin, um, that he can't combine moderate Democrats with Republicans to get enough people to support his veto. And therefore, it's likely that a veto would be overridden. It has far less sway, power, whatever you wanna say. So we're paying really, really close attention from the start on this measure. I will tell you that he is looking at it this year, Maroni, um, as we'd like to have something. We'd like it not to go too far, and it'd be nice, whatever we pass, if the rest of the country could do something similar. So Colorado was the first state to pass something last year, and the governor vetoed it. It went too far. They had the same problem we did. This year, they're coming back. Virginia has another measure. And Senator Maroni is meeting with these other states and these other senators on a regular basis to try to have a bill that is similar from state to state move forward. Almost every state legislature has to have their fingerprints on something, so it'll get modified at some point. All the states will have something that's just a little bit different. But right now, that's moving forward. We don't have the actual bill to see it in detail yet because the bill has been raised in what they call concept form. So it's an act concerning artificial intelligence. And until it drops, we won't know everything that's in it, meaning when it's published. But we have seen drafts, and right now, it looks more like where governor, more like where Senator Maroni started last year and not finished. So we're not seeing all those liability provisions in it. At the same time that that's going on, the governor has submitted his own artificial intelligence bill, and that was heard last, um, last week on Friday. And that's an act addressing innovation in artificial intelligence. And in this, you know, he's mandating adherence to existing discrimination laws. He's establishing a, um, a regulatory sandbox, which Senator Maroni's bill is supposed to have too, meaning that, um, you have the ability to have some things waived if you seek that waiver, um, and you can show good cause and that you still have certain protections. Um, that to the business community is extremely important because they say it allows innovators to, um, work around some requirements when needed, but without going, um, astray of what the law intends in terms of protections. Uh, it introduces a new initiative by Connecticut Innovations to help develop AI. Um, and help entrepreneurs with startups and stuff. And it creates two positions at the Department of Economic Development, um, for AI coordination among the colleges and universities. Because one of their big efforts is to get people educated so that we are one of those places where a lot of that AI innovation is taking place. The governor's put a lot of effort on, uh, his economic development efforts where, um, software developers are concerned and AI, et cetera. So this is, um, this is gonna be a hot topic. At the end of the year, we will have a bill. We do have a few firms that have specialty in this area that are part of the governor's think tank that are part of Senator Maroni's Advisory Council on AI. We've got the CEO of IBM is one of the people on the Advisory Council. We've got several people from, um, the Yale AI Lab working on this, a, a number of different groups. So I'm hopeful that in the end this year, we'll have a decent bill, but we are going to have to be very, very careful as this moves along. Most of you are using AI substantially now, whether you're aware of it or not, because it's built into a lot of the software programs you use, whether it be for audit or for tax. Um, but, uh, that use is just gonna, going to increase, and we just need to make sure we've got protections. Just give you one example of why last year really concerned me and a number of others. When we hire, we use Indeed a lot. And Indeed has an AI component to it. And the bill last year, after the trial attorneys got involved, said that if you use, um, AI and there's a discriminatory, um, aspect to it, or there, you're using false information, you're liable. Even if you're not the one who created that program. Well, we all know that anybody can put whatever they want in a resume and submit it to, um, Indeed. And Indeed has this thing that will pull up resumes and recommend you, um, resumes to look at. Well, if someone put a false resume in, so I didn't poll somebody else because this person jumped up higher, um, I could be held liable if I hired that person. That's not, that's not what was intended, but that's the way the bill, uh, unfortunately was written and the liability that could have been had. Hopefully, everyone does, you know, checks to make sure the resumes they receive, if they're gonna hire someone, are accurate, et cetera. But you don't wanna have to worry about being held responsible for something or an algorithm where you did not input data and you had no control over it. We do need to make sure that what we're using has, um, has protections built in. But I don't have the ability to check that out. I can only ask the question and be told an answer when I'm using most of this software. So we are very, very aware of liability concerns and acting on those anytime there's something that is of concern. So that's AI for now. Does anybody have any questions regarding AI? There are a lot of other bills, but there are specific ones to controlling rent costs and number of other things that just are specific little ones, nothing that impacts us as a whole right now. All right. We did the pathways to licensure. Um, I will tell you that there has been some concerns about labor bills that were proposed. I'm gonna tell you, we don't have concerns regarding those measures. If you hear anything regarding predictive scheduling or, um, having to give people their schedule in advance and then you can't modify it, either by reducing hours or increasing hours, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, don't worry about that. Those were measures that were put forward for, um, not professionals, but individuals that are working at retail shops, at restaurants, and at, um, nursing homes. Those were for lower wage workers that oftentimes have part-time jobs and, um, don't accept a shift somewhere else because they were told they were gonna be able to work, you know, for you, and then you cancel it last second. As again, a retailer, a restaurant, or, um, a nursing home. So those are out there, but again, they do not apply to, to CPAs right now. Um, I believe that all of them only apply to non-exempt workers. We'll keep our eye on that to make sure nothing changes. The only bill that's out there right now, um, and this would not have a big impact on most of our people, uh, that some people are gonna have to be concerned with or just aware of, is if you have a significant security system for getting through screening, coming through or leaving the way some of our defense contractors do, um, some of the pharmaceutical companies do, uh, if you have an hourly worker, that screening time, the pre and post-shift, uh, to make sure you didn't bring anything in or you're not taking anything out, that would count as work hours under one of the bills before the Labor Committee. But those are the only two bills I've heard people raise concerns with, and they're not concerns that we have because they're not, they don't impact you. They don't impact you as drafted. Somebody said, oh, I, so, oh, there was a bill out there to, um, repeal the limitations on non-competes. That bill, um, is not going anywhere. The non-compete prohibitions are here. They're staying. Um, that bill was introduced by a, a person who, um, has little sway at the Capitol. So it won't even get a public hearing. Other than that, I do not believe there's anything that has been put forward, um, that impacts you that, um, I need to inform you about. There is a bill, I know many of you hate the state's retirement system, um, program that they've established for individuals. I can't remember the name of it. I'm drawing a blank, but just run out of the comptroller's office. There is a concept bill now, so again, all I have is a title. I don't have an actual bill to look at that has, um, implementing the changes of the task force that looked at this state retirement system. And I'm not talking about state employees. I'm talking about the retirement system that's made available to the public. That's all we have at this point. Once it comes out, we'll review it. We'll share the information. We'll get your thoughts on it. And we'll either work for it or against it, um, or stay neutral, depending on what you tell us. But right now, um, that's it on the labor employment front. On the tax front, we have quite a few things to, to fill you in on, so I'm gonna move on those quickly. The first is the governor's package. The governor, um, in his budget address, mentioned a couple of things when he was giving his address that were all nice, and we were like, oh, yay, that's great. You know, he's, um, eliminating the capital base tax, uh, sooner than anticipated. He is, um, increasing the R and D tax credit for some people. Well, he's doing a number of things. He mentioned the two nice ones. I'm gonna give you all of them quickly. The first one impacts very few people, and it's a property tax credit. He's increasing that tax credit from three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand for single filers, um, earning up to seventy thousand and joint up to one hundred thousand. So that is out there. That's the only thing that he is promoted on property tax or for individuals as a whole. Um, the corporate tax surcharge, he is extending that again. Um, he is extending that for fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven. Remember, it's a two-year budget. It'll be forty-eight million dollars in the first year and an eighty million dollar increase in the second year, so he is moving forward with that. That is not a big surprise to the business community. They always argue not to keep it a permanent one because it will impact, um, oh geez, I can't remember when I used to lobby on that for them, but it will have a negative impact on them paper-wise. And so they'd rather the, it was just reintroduced every couple of years. In reality, they would love it to go away, but, um, that's not one thing that, uh, the leaders have been supportive of, unfortunately. The capital ba-, base tax, they are, um, they are accelerating that by two years. So they would have it end in twenty-five instead of twenty-five eight, uh, and started, instead of twenty-twenty-eight. And that's expected to, um, save employers fifteen point three million in the first year and twenty in the second. Um, combined unitary reporting cap, this is a big one, and supposedly it affects twenty-four or fewer sta-, uh, companies in the state, but it doesn't, it impact all the big guys. Again, the rumor at the Capitol is that, um, the governor reached out to a number of them while they're not happy. Uh, supposedly, it is not, um, something they are gonna, uh, die on the sword to stop. But that is combined unitary reporting cap. The two-point-five million dollar cap on it, um, would be eliminated effective January one, twenty-twenty-six. And the governor's proposing that the removal of that cap would result in a one-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-one-million-dollar increase in fiscal year twenty-six and an eighty-three-point-two-million-dollar increase in fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, according to the governor's office, he's got twenty-eight states and the District of Columbia, um, that have a similar form of this, what he's calling enhanced unitary reporting. And again, he's claiming that it only pa-, impacts around two dozen people. The last thing that he's got in terms of corporate taxes is the net operating loss, um, carryforward deducts, deduction. He's saying that, um, combined groups that surrendered NOLs in twenty-fifteen would be allowed to reclaim them, aligning their deduction limits with other corporations. So the elimination of the one-hundred percent net operating loss carryforward for companies with six billion dollars or more in losses will result in eight-point-three-million-dollar tax increase, um, both in fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, there is something he's putting forward in terms of an interest waiver for underpayments due to retroactive tax changes. And he's saying that would be waived. That, I know, is something that's welcomed by our group. We're always trying to get the tax rate changed because it's exorbitant. Um, and that's something we've not been able to, uh, make happen, so having this waived when they make, um, retroactive changes is only fair. The other changes that he's put forward are the, um, three where tax credits are concerned. The first one is a film production tax credit, and on that one, um, he's saying that the top rate for film production tax credit would be reduced from thirty percent to twenty-five percent effective January one, twenty-six, and that that reduction, um, would result in a nine-point-two-million-dollar tax increase for fifty, fiscal year twenty-six and seventeen-point-one for fiscal year twenty-seven. There was a lot of talks surrounding this, and the governor did, um, produce a chart on his Secretary of OPM that showed that the bulk of the states that offer the tax credit, offer it at the twenty-five percent, and therefore will be competitive. You have the other side saying that, uh, well, now we're in with everyone else. Before, we were just above. We had a competitive advantage. We no longer do. So there's a lot of fighting going on with that film tax credit. Um, that's an issue that brings people out of the woodwork. It always surprises me how many people care about that tax credit. On the R and D, um, credit side, the, the, it, the exchange rate, the exchange rate for biotech companies um, would increase from sixty-five percent to ninety percent effective January one, twenty-twenty-five. And this will align us with Massachusetts and New York. Um, this results in a one-point-eight-million-dollar savings for bioscience companies, where the governor seemed to be focused as he was giving his budget address and pulling everything together. And then there's a digital animation tax credit, and this credit would be eliminated. Um, but that's really not a biggie, because they're saying that no credits have been issued for this since twenty-sixteen. So that's the governor's, um, proposal for purposes of the, um, revenue side of his, his package. There are a number of other proposals out there in the Finance Committee. They have not yet, um, had a public hearing, and they are meeting again this afternoon to continue raising bills. They did schedule a subject matter hearing on two bills that may be of interest. One was House Bill five-five-four-nine, an act restoring the rate of the credit against the affected business entity. And so, um, a subject matter hearing means that you testify on a one- or two-line bill. It's not been fully drafted. So that's never real fun, because you're not really sure what the bill's gonna be in the end, but that's one of the ones he's got out there, the committee has. And they've got another one, Senate Bill seven-four-two, that would establish a capital gains surcharge for certain tax, for certain taxpayers. Those are obviously things that we never like to, to hear about, but they've got quite a few there. More importantly, it makes it sound like there's not a lot of bills out there in the tax world, which is just not true. So last night, I pulled together all those concept bills. Those are again where we have a title. We don't have the fully drafted bill, nor do we have a bill number. Ours is one of those, you know, the Act Concerning Certified Public Accountants, the Mobility and Licensure. And now our second one, which the State Tax Group requested, is an act concerning taxpayer appeals audits and municipal bond premium or amortizations. Those were our two top asks. And we had one of those raised last year, but we're told it was just going to be for a hearing. This year, we've got the hearing. We have the ability to get it out of committee. We hope that we can be successful in doing so. But the Audit Appeals grants taxpayers the right to request the Commissioner of Department of Revenues, issue a final decision within fifteen days of receiving their request if an administrative tax protest remains unresolved after one year. Arizona has something similar, several states do, but we've got some real, real problem cases before DRS where they're choosing not to move forward with it, and taxes interest is running if we lose. So that's a measure that the Tax Committee felt very strongly about. It was pushed last year. We were told that they would hear it, but they would not act on it because it was not a a fiscal year, and we needed to do something like that in a long session. So that that's there. The second half of that is the the bond issue. And we're trying to have non-Connecticut municipal bonds treated the same way as Connecticut municipal bonds. So that measure has been raised as a concept. I imagine it'll be two weeks. We have to give them drafted language every time, so it could come out tomorrow, but usually you're in a queue. And given the fact that all the other committees are still waiting for stuff, it's like we're in a pig pile. So we're waiting till we can get our head up above and the bill pops out, so we can actually see what's what's in that measure. Having said that, those titles without bill numbers, they are a lot that have already been raised. Many of them are going to call our catch-all bills, so I can't even tell you what might be in them because it's an act concerning finance, an act concerning finance policy, an act concerning fiscal policy, an act concerning revenue. These are like dummy bills where they can throw anything and everything they want into it. So not sure what's going to happen there. We do know that they have several specialty taxes surrounding energy, solar, et cetera, that they're hoping to move forward to encourage people to use renewable energies. On the estate and gift tax, they also have one concern, again, an act concerning estate and gift taxes. We don't have that often, so I was surprised to see that there. On the fee front, they do have a measure that would limit interchange fees, so those credit card exchange fees, which a lot of our members seem interested in, are not advocating one way or the other, but seem to want to be aware of. So do know that that issue's coming back again this year. And it's before the Banks Committee as well. There's two bills out there on this same topic. There's another one regarding the activational fees that we discussed earlier. There are quite a few when it comes to I'm going to call one-offs for like historic buildings and a lot of different types of one-off credits. There is a measure, an act concerning small businesses, and I'm not sure this will happen, but I do believe that may be somebody putting in the restoration of the pasture entity tax. We'll have to wait till the bill comes out. There's quite a few on property taxes, but things like statewide automobile one. There's an act concerning the sales and use taxes, and I think that's to look at some of those luxury tax and food taxes that were put in a few years ago, but we'll see when that comes out. There are some regarding farm. If you've got any farmers, pay attention to that, also regarding renters, and then houses. So there's a big issue at the Capitol this year with not enough housing in the state. How are we going to help there? What are we going to do? So there's a lot of different bills there for tax credits to help people develop, convert, and there's a lot of things to try to help new home buyers as well. I ran through everything very quick, but I got done with only three minutes to spare, so I'm going to open it up to questions. And I'm sorry you don't have more time to do that. It's just the time of year when there's a lot of stuff flowing. But do know that you can contact me at any time with any questions you have, should you have one come up later or not have a chance to have your question answered today. So anybody with any questions on anything I raised or did not raise? Anybody need any Tylenol? All right. So we are going to tell the those of you that are on state tax, we'll be informing you today that the committee meeting today has our bill on it and is raising it along with the other bills that they they've got on the agenda for for today. We will keep people posted with the the update for the advocacy update. But if you want to know what's going on with any tax bills, I strongly recommend that you join the Tax Committee because that's where we send the agenda so they can see them. They have an opportunity to tell us what they care about or don't. If you're not a member of the State Tax Group, which there's no fee for, you will not get those individual updates on those bills. You'll just get the update on larger issues as we move through the session via the advocacy update. For those of you that are on the nonprofit committee, the threshold bill, the Planning and Development Committee has not raised it yet. I have identified a couple of bills that I could get it tagged on to in the future if we need to. They still have a couple more meetings, so it hasn't been an absolute no yet, but it is an uphill battle. And it's an uphill battle because they made a change last year. It doesn't mean that we won't stop working with Bill Plummer on the regulatory issues. It just means that we we may have a challenge with increasing the threshold this year at the Capitol. And then the last thing, just for the State Board of Accountancy, seeing how nobody's asked a question, we have one minute left. I would like to let you know there's been quite a few changes on the State Board this past year. We now have a full board for the first time in eight years, and we have a couple of people on there that are not familiar with the CPA world at all. We have some people that are absolutely fantastic, too. But I have gone to them on several occasions for things that have come up, and they were one-hundred-percent behind us on the mobility and on the licensure to pathways. So if you do see a member of the State Board of Accountancy, please thank them for their support there. It does make a difference. We are having issues with DCP on firm permits. They are being extremely, extremely aggressive. In one area, they did not understand the difference between what they were asking for and the peer review standards and thought that we could just tell the peer AICPA to change what they were doing on their peer review program. Obviously, that's not possible, and the State Board of Accountancy backed us one-hundred percent. So we have to make modifications to our statutes and regulations. No surprise, they haven't all been updated in a very long time. So we'll work quickly to do that. If you have an issue regarding the State Board or DCP, please let me know because the State Board is actually very good to work with. And DCP is not bad. They're just not real familiar with a lot of specific issues that CPAs deal with. I'm now at ten-oh-one, so I want to stop because I've gone over, but again, please feel free to contact me with any questions that you may have. Is the DRS intending to have the new PET tax calculations out to the software providers? They did that last not this past Friday, but the Monday, last Monday. So they did it not yesterday, but a Monday before. Everyone is extremely upset. I understand that. The problem now is that after the software providers get it into their system, upload it, and are done with their beta testing, they have to go back to DRS for approval before they can have those software systems go live. So we we're aware of that. We have received requests from some people to ask the DRS to extend the deadline to four-fifteen, and we have that request just about to go in. I don't know what will happen with it. DRS actually can't do it. It will have to be the governor. But we're making the request to DRS to start with, and then we will go to the governor next. A lot of it depends on your software company as well. Some are able to move much quicker once they do have the forms than others. And DRS is making it sound like everything's all set and all fine because they've got their website up and running. But they don't have an outside vendor. They didn't have to go back out and get approval to put theirs up, so it's it's rather misleading, unfortunately. So we are moving forward trying to get to an extension on the three-fifteen deadline to four-fifteen, but I would not count on it. That's it. Thanks, everyone. Ten-oh-three, I apologize for running over. Have a great day. And again, if you've got any questions, feel free to give me a buzz. Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.